Anything better than soup? Oh, it's ugly. No, it's all right. This is not. I don't know.
Not necessary. So those are Harvey windows, huh?
I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
It's why would you say?
Those are Harvey windows, huh? Those are Harvey windows? The windows?
Uh, what the one we have?
Yeah.
I think that's what he said. So the wood one is like this. There was the number one in the eighties. He goes, he goes, these were the best. Because the guy must spend a lot of money for these things.
I bet. Back in the day.
Hey, he's the one who saw it. But he's a, this guy knows the windows better than the other guy.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
The other guy is probably a better salesman.
Salesman. This guy is probably an installer because he's got that truck. That says, uh, when the world, you know, I was just gonna say, wow, you got the truck. The other guy has own car. Well, he's the salesman.
You have not entered any number. Please re-enter your meeting ID, followed by pound.
Oh, chicken?
Chow mein.
Chow mein and the string rolls.
Enter your participant ID, followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. Please enter the meeting password, followed by pound. You are leaving now. There are four participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
There you are, Gene.
I knew I'd hear from you, Joseph.
Yeah, I got one request.
What's that?
A wolf slip.
Oh, yeah.
The green algae came back big this year.
I'm gonna make my note on that right now.
Thank you.
We'll get, we'll, we'll talk with, uh, Zach. Tony.
Tony, go through Tony.
No. Now, Tony, he took care of the last, in fact, that young Dan there did a great job.
Well, it's thick enough to be mold.
Really?
Yes.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't that be normal after a winter season?
Only on that cement. On all the other ramps around here, cement is different or are different. They don't get growth.
Let me write this down.
Isn't it, Josh? Great.
Town wolf algae. Removal. And that should, should be on the horizon.
Thank you.
When, when, when does everybody start? Putting their boats in?
Well, Henry Hall uses it almost daily. Goes for row at a skip. I'm gonna start in a month. Then about two weeks after that, the, uh, Tom, uh, all the boats in storage have to start coming out. It'll be lobstermen first.
Yes, well, but they haven't till winter pull up, May.
May 15th, everyone's supposed to be off the wharf.
Fifteenth, okay. We should make you an honorary more Wharfinger.
Who?
You.
Well, the current alternate Wharfinger doesn't like me, so you're gonna run into headwinds.
I can't imagine that.
Yeah, no, isn't it funny that way?
Life is strange. Especially in politics. Right, Josh?
Uh, if I, if I were in Paul, oh, but I'm not. Just a, just a guy trying to help out.
Six thirty, I'm going to you, Tony.
Okay, Joe.
Hey, guys, you were just talking about the boats and stuff? Do you know what happened? I know Joel Marie doesn't do the moorings anymore. But that, and he, I got a name of someone else he referred us to. But the guy never came and took the moorings out. How, they're all still in the water. Do you know anything about it?
Uh, Houghton Marine is the, uh, Houghton Marine Services is doing the moorings now. Joe Houghton is his name. They're out of Marblehead.
Okay, yeah, I think we left messages and he said he was gonna come out and never did.
This is for mooring, mooring service?
Moring, yeah, we've got.
Yeah, he's really good. Um, there was.
Houghton, you said?
Yeah, H O U G H. T O N, something like that.
Okay. Thank you. I'll give him a call. I mean, it's too late now, but. I'll call him for next year.
Hey, Josh, the, the moorings are still there, but he has all the pennants and pickup buoys in his garage, wherever he is. He was, he always intended to keep the moorings and the morning balls in the water.
Okay, because Joe needs to take, um, our whole ball and everything.
Yeah, it's a different show now, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Marky, you with us?
Here he comes.
Wait a few minutes.
I'm here. I'm just trying to get my lighting right here. I'm not at my house, though.
It's good mood lighting you have there.
I know.
Very mysteriously, very mysteriously.
Where are you? No, you shouldn't.
I'm in my town's location. Charlestown. You know where Charlestown is, Gene?
I sure do.
Monument Square.
You spent some time here.
Thompson Square.
Yeah, how about the, uh, the Charlestown Boys Club?
Yeah, on Green Street.
That's right. You got it.
Yeah, I remember going from the gym to the, uh, the pool. And you had to duck all those Charlestown kids. That's how you learned to fight.
Yeah. I'll play basketball.
I'll play basketball. Okay, welcome everybody to the, um, March the 15th is the 15th. For a selectmen's meeting. And in beginning, I'd just like to, uh. Well, you don't have to say thanks, but I will for the preparation that was given toward the storm. We didn't need it. But Tony, uh, as I saw it and understand it and heard it, you guys were well prepared for this. Uh, with emergency management meetings and department heads, et cetera, et cetera. You might want to acknowledge that.
Yeah, I was planning on it. Um. Chief Furlong has, uh, taken the role as of our emergency management director and, um. He has been doing a tremendous job at that. Uh, expanded, as you, as, as you know, we've added some new members to the team. Um, we have a couple more members that are interested in getting involved and. Uh, for this storm, we met as a group that would include Chief Furlong, members of the police department, members of emergency management, members of the DPW, myself and the fire department. And, um. You know, those guys have it down. Have a playbook, you know, that they run through. It's like getting ready for a football game almost. It's, it's, you know, they, right when you walk in, uh, this, this, this meeting, you know, they had a PowerPoint presentation about the details of the storm, you know, different details that they received through Mima calls at given times and when the new information was gonna be provided to us. You know, what we were expecting as far as wind, rain, snow, uh, when high tides were, what the height of those tides were. Um, temperature, you know, all the, there's so many different details. There's so much stuff that goes into it. And, uh, this storm. Not all storms call for that much of an in-depth meeting of prep. But this storm did because it was, it was, it was very complex. It, it came with. Uh, high amounts of rainfall, potential coastal flooding, heavy winds, potential power outages and potential snowfall. So there's a lot of different details there that, you know, we, we prep for and. Um, you know, our, our guys just do such an amazing job and it's, um. You know, it's, it's why we're able to kind of keep up with the flooding, uh. Better than I think we have in the past. And I think it's also why we're able to recover quicker than we have in the past. Um, and it, you know, really it comes down to that communication preparation and then execution the day of the storm. So. Uh, I commend, you know, all of them for, for, uh, how, how well they work together. Um, and I, you know, wanna promote, uh, the emergency management, uh, department's phone number, um, which is seven eight one, seven seven one, two one two one. Um, residents, when we have, when we have storms like that and you're looking for information about, you know, anything related to the town and that storm, that's the number you wanna call. You'll have a live person pick up the phone and we'll be taking in information and providing information out. Uh, so we were, we had someone ready to go. We had a team ready to go if, in case we needed to, to, uh, open a shelter at the school. If we had power outages and cold weather. Um, luckily, we didn't have to do that. Um, and, uh, yeah, they did a, they did a tremendous job handling the, the complexities of this storm. We, we have one more astronomical high tide, I think, late next week. Uh, circled on the calendar. And, uh, once we, once we get past that date, you know, I think we all can rest a little bit easier.
No, that's excellent. Thanks for the summary and, and it was great to see the pumps in place and all ready for activation.
As you, as you. I mean, it helps us keep up with the, with the added flow of water. And, and it, you know, we're already deployed, ready to go. Once the tide recedes, we're already, we're already pumping, you know, to, on the recovery side, so.
Hey, not for full discussion, but just while we're on the subject of storms and shelters and things of that nature, driving around town. Is, is there ever any future use possible for the bunkers as staging for, for events? You know, similar to what Northeastern did to, to the Murphy bunker?
It's, it, it would be quite, you know, it's a pretty, pretty large investment. Um, there is a potential use there, but it would be a, a, a pretty significant capital investment to, um. Outfit the bunkers so that they are, you know, they meet code and eligibility for proper shelter spaces.
The, uh, the one at, um. Fort Rockman, you know, um, Bailey Hill area, um, is filled with the hot sailing program, sailboats, well, sailboats and motorboats. Uh, except in the summer, of course. So he knows you.
I just thought if it was federal money available and they were usable uh, and practical, then it might be something to look at, but that's down the road, I'm sure. The other thing I'd like to do, if I could, is, um, congratulate Jackie Gavin's dad on his hundred and third birthday. And, and, uh, he is truly one of the, the great generations. There is no doubt. And I, I wish I had known about it. I would have been there. But to Jackie and his dad, congratulations. I'm sure you guys may wanna say something, too.
Yeah, happy birthday, Mr. Gavin. That's amazing.
Yeah, the, the thing about Mr. Gavin is, uh, he's a, he's a real Renaissance man. He's a, uh, he plays the, um, um, saxophone, if you didn't know. He's a jazz musician. He holds his pilot's license both in air and sea. He's a, yeah, he, he's a wonderful painter. Uh, some of his artwork is phenomenal. So he's really an amazing person, uh, with, with some skills and knowledge that I don't think most people really understand, uh, know about. Really quite, quite the guy.
I, I guess that's called a full life.
Yeah.
Also some amazing stories from World War II. I think he was a pilot towing, um, gliders on a D-Day. Served, um. Did the, uh, at least a few sorties that day.
Yeah. He, uh, he was, he was my neighbor, uh, when I was growing up and, um. You know, whenever me and my brother would hit a baseball or something over the fence into his yard. He'd razz us how we, you know. He, he, he would razz us, say, hey, you better practice that swing, Tony, if you wanna do anything in baseball. You know, he, he was a funny, a funny guy.
He's a good guy.
Very good.
I think his sister, um, you know, bought that Gavin house, didn't they? Didn't?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, great guy. One of the best.
Yes. Okay, Josh, you wanna pick up?
Sure, I can read the, uh, opening comments. Um. First of all, um. There's a Northern Strand Extension Project Virtual Public Meeting tomorrow, March 16th at 6:30 PM via Zoom. Uh, visit the Northern Strand page at hot dot O for Zoom information and to register for the meeting. So. So this is a meeting of great importance to Nahat residents as well as Swamp Scott and Roblehead residents. So, um, for those of you who don't know what the Northern Strand is, this is a, this is a planned bike path. Um, and, um, it involves replacing the right-hand lane on the Linway from roughly the community college to the Rotary, uh, with a bike path. So, I mean, it's a little lane loses a lane, uh, not all the way to, uh, Nahat's turnoff to the Rotary, but almost. So, um, this is something that, uh, people are going to want to join and voice their concerns and opinions and, uh, whatever it may be. So, um, do check out that, that meeting. It's, it's important for, um, Nahaters.
Um, would you like me to share, like, show people how to get to that on, uh?
Oh, that'd be a good idea, Tony. That'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
And, you know, while you're, while you're pulling that up, um, you know, the, the board has had this on the agenda for several times over the last year and a half. Um, we've all attended, um, meetings on this. I know, I think Mark, you and, uh, Tony met with them and walked the, uh, the area. Uh, we have proposed, formally proposed, um, alternates to, uh, the reduction of the lane on the northbound side of 1A. Um, unfortunately, those were not adopted, uh, but, um, we've been trying. Um, and as I said, we, we did succeed in getting the, to sort of restore the not only exit lane. Um, so that was, that was a help, but, um, you know, still, still some concerns with this plan, honestly, at least in my case. Um, yeah, go ahead, Tony.
All right, so if you go to Nahat.org, this is the home screen. And, uh, community topics is the tab, really where we put a lot of like these types of, you know, hot topic issues that come before the Board of Selectmen and we hear about in the, uh, in the community. Uh, so here you can get the Coyote Information, MBTA Better Bus Project and RNAV Study. But right here, Northern Strand Extension Project. Um, as you can see, there's, there's the information about the meeting tomorrow night. You do have to register, uh, there's a registration link right there. And if you continue to scroll down, uh, you'll see, you know, here the, uh, concept plans. You know, these two pictures down the bottom really show like your before and after concept. Um, and if you click on this extension or this link here, it'll bring you to the actual plans. And show you. This is the Market Street intersection where the bike lane, the protected, dedicated two-way bike lane would begin. So this is right where the new Beacon Chevrolet housing development was just recently built. Uh, their idea is that the bike lane is going to come through this green space from Market Street, uh, across the road, across Market, across the road, across the Linway. And then this is where this bike lane begins. And as you can see, it continues, uh, down the, it's actually called the Carroll Parkway section of the Linway. And it, as you mentioned, it, it, the proposal is to remove the far-right lane, uh, to create a dedicated, um, create like a barrier of protection for the bike lane. It continues, um, along and then when it gets to the Rotary, this way you can see as it approaches the Rotary, uh, the previous plan, I think at twenty-five percent or seventy-five percent, had this, uh, bike lane, you know, coming off of the road and onto the green space, a little bit closer to the Rotary, I would say. This is where, you know, we asked them to peel this back a little bit as far as they could go. They have some land ownership issues that prevent them from going further back. Uh, so at the Rotary, it jumps off of the road. The Rotary itself will, will not see any changes, but the land to the right of the Rotary, right where like the basketball courts and tennis courts are, is where you'll see the bike lane. They're not going to put bikes in the Rotary itself. Um, and then it exits towards the causeway. And when it gets to, you know, the driveway for the MDC Maintenance Building, they're going to put a, um, crossing signal and a crosswalk there for the bike lane to cross it. Um, across Nahat Road, it's called, but it's the cause, it's not really the causeway yet. It's the, it's right before the causeway starts to get over to the Ward Bath House. As Josh had mentioned, you know, we talked a lot about, um, we, we originally went, we've met, um, met with folks on site. We participated in public meetings. We articulated to Mastoc, who's running this project, our concerns. And can you guys still see me or hear me?
Yeah, we, we can see you. We, we don't see the, uh, plans anymore.
All right, um, and our initial, you know, like Josh had mentioned, our initial comments were really, you know, what about the other side? What about the southbound lanes of the, of the Linway? Uh, that's really where, you know, traffic doesn't build up as much on the southbound side exiting the Rotary, uh, compared to the northbound side as you're entering or approaching the Rotary. Um, and, you know, the, we, there were comments responded to that where they looked into it and didn't find it to be a better option. Um, so, you know, the Board of Selectmen and I have definitely expressed or relayed the concerns. We are supportive of the project. We're supportive of, uh, of having the bike lane reach the shores of Lynn and in the hot. Um, we're just, you know, want to relay those concerns that our residents have. So urge, um, urge residents to join the public meeting. Uh, the last public meeting. Can you guys still see me?
Yep.
I, Dan's video screen is like going haywire and I don't know if it's just me or.
No, it's just Dan. It's me, I don't know why he's doing that.
Um, so I just want to, you know, I just finished, finished it off with the last public meeting. The selectmen were on it and myself, um, maybe, uh, you know, a couple people from the city of Lynn, Mastoc, maybe one or two residents from Nahat and a few, you know, residents from Everett and Somerville. Uh, it really wasn't, there wasn't a lot of attendance, you know, from our community. So I urge people to join, this is the, they're at a hundred percent design. So if you haven't had an opportunity to, you know, join these meetings and you have questions or comments or concerns, uh, this is going to be the, the opportunity or the la, one of the, probably the last opportunity unless they, uh, go back to the drawing board to voice those. So important people join and, and, uh, listen in and make any comments or have any, or, uh, provide any questions that they might have.
Yeah, and I know Tony that you, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Gene, go ahead.
It's all right. Uh, Tony and I had talked about this the other day. And as much as you try to, to make adjustments or changes to it, it's difficult. We were looking at it becoming an HOV lane like we have on the expressway in Boston. So that at one, at one point, it, it coming up in the morning, you'd have three lanes. You borrow a lane from each side, north and south. But you know, the more you think about the whole project, it's going to be a difficult project to, to manage. Traffic-wise.
I, I relayed, you know, when we were doing the Linway sewer project and we took away a lane for an extended period of time, um, we were feeling the, you know, complaints. Uh, the number of complaints we were getting from not just Nahat residents, but our neighbors and how that impacted their commute. Um, and DCR was, you know, uh, experiencing that too, relaying that information to us. And, you know, I just think that, um, there could, it's going to, it is going to have an impact on those commuters. And I want to make sure they're aware of, you know, their opportunity to provide public comment now.
Yeah, Tony, I know you, uh, contacted Little Night and asked them to print an article. Uh, that was good thinking, you know, because it is easier for these, these meetings to go unnoticed and poorly attended by the public. So, uh, good thinking and, uh, hopefully we'll get, you know, more people on the call this time and, um, chance for the, for the designers to, um, hear the comments.
That's tomorrow night at seven o'clock?
Six thirty. Yes, all right. So we're twenty minutes in and we've got one announcement. Um, so, uh, if we're ready, I'll move on to the next. Um, winter parking ban is in effect until March twentieth. All vehicles must be removed from the street from, uh, twelve AM to six AM. Twenty twenty-three resident parking stickers are now available to purchase. All sticker sales will be done online by visiting Nahat.org. Stickers, excuse me, ten dollars each. All outstanding bills must be paid to the town and a census must be completed. If you have any questions, then you can call the parking clerk at seven eight one, five eight one, zero zero eight eight, extension twenty-eight. Annual dog licenses are due back by April third, twenty twenty-three. A fifty, a twenty-five dollar fine will be charged after April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please call the town clerk with any questions. Uh, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three marks the town of Nahat's one-hundred-and-seventieth anniversary. Wow, that's great. Um, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three is the swim annual spring beach cleanup, starting at eleven AM. Volunteers will meet at the Lowlands Parking Lot and then go to Shore Beach and Doggy Beach to begin cleanup. Bags will be provided and gloves are strongly suggested. Um, there's some information on town elections. Uh, the town elections are Saturday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, that's the annual town election. Polls will open at town hall, will be open at town hall from seven AM to eight PM. Tuesday, March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three by five PM is the last day to object or withdraw. Uh, if you've filed papers, um, and that withdrawal must be submitted to the town clerk. Wednesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three by five PM is the last day to register to vote for the town election. Friday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three by five PM, eight-day pre-election campaign finance report due, is due to the town clerk. Monday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three by five PM, the thirty-day post-election campaign finance report is due to the town clerk. Uh, scholarships, available scholarships. Uh, we're currently accepting applications for the Charles Kelly, Bob and Janet Monley, Nahat Women's Club, American Legion and the Jennifer J. Harris scholarships. Visit the scholarships page at Nahat.org for applications and contact info. And that is it for announcements. Somebody has something else?
Any, any comments, questions? Mark, who's the new business?
Uh, my only, um, comment was I, um, I participated with Nahat, um, Public Library in a little play we had on, um, Saturday, um, Our Community, which was really, really nicely done. I, I want to thank Sharon and, uh, her staff for putting it on. Uh, Chief, uh, Phil, I'm myself and a number of other people participated in it. We had a good time. So thank you, Sharon, and thank you for your staff for doing that.
Excellent.
Um, new business, some, uh, appointments to the Call Fire, Fire Department. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Michael Day Joseph Petros. Is that, I pronounced that right, Tony? And, and Ra, and Ronald Petrucci as Call Firefighters in the Nahat Fire Department.
Seconded.
Discussion?
Chief Antrim is on the call with us. Chief, do you want to provide some details?
Sure, thank you, Tony. Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to, uh, have these three gentlemen appointed to the Call Department. We're, um, really in need of Call Firefighters. Uh, we hired two, um, back in June. Um, I have two more sort of in the hiring process now. Um, and then these three, uh, one is from Nahat, one from Lynn, one from Swamp Scott. Um, but I just want to put out there, we, we are probably down about, uh, eight to ten Call Firefighters. And our, uh, staffing model that we have really relies on Nahat residents to, um, participate and be part-time firefighters, uh, because our Call Firefighters don't work shifts. So they are always just on call. Um, so we can't hire anyone sort of outside a one-mile radius from the town of Nahat. So for every applicant that I get, uh, within that radius is probably three I have to turn away, um, because they just don't live close enough, um, to work. And, uh, you know, it's pretty, getting pretty rare to get, uh, Nahat residents to apply. So, uh, if you know of anyone interested, uh, or, you know, looking for something else to do, um, something fun. It's not a huge time commitment once you get beyond the initial training. Um, but we, we really need the help. Um, so I'm excited to bring these three on board. We'll do as much in-house training as we can until, uh, we can get them into the Fire Academy in October. Um, that's when it's offered every year in this area. Um, but that's all. Thank you. I appreciate the support.
Chief, I got, I got a question. Um, does it require, um, so to be on the Call Department, they, they need to go through some sort of training? Is that fact?
Yes, um, they're required to attend, um, the Massachusetts Fire Academy. They, um, the Fire Academy has a recruit program for full-time personnel, but they also, um, for the past twenty years or so have had this, um, program that's nights and weekends for part-time or volunteer firefighters. Um, so in this area, it's held every year in the fall. Um, it's two hundred and forty hours of training broken up over two evenings a week and Saturdays. Um, it's, it's a big commitment. Um, it's a lot of work, a lot of academic work and practical skills. But, um, by the time they graduate, they're, they're certified as firefighters and they're ready to work. And it's a requirement in Massachusetts. We can't, can't have people go into burning buildings anymore without being certified as firefighters. So, um, that's been a challenge, getting people to commit to all that training for, you know, what's really just a hard-time job, so.
Yeah, makes sense. Is, is there a age requirement?
Um, yeah, we require minimum age of eighteen and maximum age of sixty-five. That's a pretty wide range.
And Chief. Saying I still have a window.
That's right.
Mark was looking.
We, we, um, there, there is some financial, uh, benefits that the town offers, uh, to prospective Call Firefighters as they're going through the training, right? So could you talk to that a little bit?
Sure, yeah, we, um, if they successfully complete the Fire Academy, um, we reimburse them for mileage, uh, for traveling back and forth, uh, to all of those classes. Uh, we do not pay them for their time while they're going. Um, but once they complete it, uh, they get a five hundred dollar bonus year one. And if they continue to participate, um, for a full year, they get the second half of the bonus, another five hundred dollars. Um, there's also another, um, stipend that Call Firefighters receive. You know, if they meet minimum requirements for attending training and, uh, calls. Um, we, we hold monthly trainings, uh, to keep up the skills that they've learned in the Fire Academy and work on other skills that are not covered in the Fire Academy, so.
And, and what's the hourly rate for when they do, um, go to calls and training?
Sure, I, I don't remember the exact rate off the top of my head. It's a, it's roughly, I think they start around nineteen dollars an hour once they become firefighter one, two certified. Uh, with the completion of the academy, I think there may be a two-dollar raise or something. They end up about twenty-one dollars an hour. Um, go ahead.
I just, you know, it's not a volunteer position, you do.
Correct, yes, it is paid, yes.
Tony, if we have that electronic sign going back out there, isn't this something we could post on that?
Yes, uh, Chief and I, the chief already has done a great job at, at recruitment and really. Yes, Chief and I, the chief already has done a great job at recruitment and really pushing the. You know, the public notice as to why we need them and what's available and and the details. And they've done, actually, the fire department's done a great job over the last few years, really ramping up that effort. That's definitely something we've done in the past and likely will do again.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Thank you, Gene.
I think it's a great opportunity, particularly for young people who live in the heart or close to the heart. Within the radius, you know. You're graduating high school, you're not quite sure what you're going to do with your life. You might go to college, you might not, you might go enter a trade or you might not. And it's an opportunity to just keep your options open. Get involved in the program. Who knows? Maybe you become a firefighter. If you don't, then you can you can contribute to the community. I think it's a great opportunity and. Thank you, Chief, for getting this message out and hopefully we'll get some recruits.
Thank you, Mike.
Every, every one of our full-time firefighters, including Chief Antrim. Have come up through the call fire department.
Yeah, we've also had a number of our call firefighters get full-time employment in other communities, you know, we don't. Mind sort of being a stepping stone as long as we get some time out of them. But, you know, we certainly support that. We've had at least five who've. You know, in the past five years gone on working full-time in other departments now.
Great, excellent. Roll call vote.
Josh Andrew mine.
My call line.
Jean Canty, I.
Surplus equipment, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to declare the following as surplus equipment. And that the equipment be placed on. On municipal bid. For auction per Mass General Law Chapter Thirty-B Procurement Law. The Power Hawk Rescue System, which includes battery-operated rescue tools and power, a power pack. Cutter, spreader, and ram. And. The Hurst Jaws of Life Rescue System, which includes a Briggs and Stratton motor hydraulic pump. Heiny. Motorized rail with fifty feet of hydraulic holes, two hydro, uh, first hydraulic. Combine tools and one first hydraulic pump.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Chief Antrim, is this all fire department equipment?
Yes, it is. It's it's all for vehicle extrication, but these two sets of tools. Are obsolete. The hydraulic tools are probably from the eighties. The. Electric set is from about two thousand. We got a grant. About a year and a half ago for new battery-operated equipment that is far superior to both of those sets. So I think they'll. We'll probably get some money for them. You know, they're still functional sets. They're just. Old and slow and not as good as the new equipment.
Doing a great job down there, chief.
Thank you, Gene.
Roll call vote.
Josh Andrew mine.
My call line.
Jean Canty, I.
Surplus office furniture moves that the board of selectmen vote to declare town hall office furniture consistent. Consisting of an assortment of fifty-five office chairs. As surplus. And that the furniture be placed on municipal bid for auction per Mass General Law Chapter Thirty-B Procurement Law.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Yeah, we were graciously donated a number of. Barely new office chairs as well as. Chairs for the Council on Aging. By Peter Barber, member of our Finance Committee and is. In his full-time position. I don't, I don't actually know what his title is or. They were shutting down an office. And we're going to be throwing away a lot of this equipment. He reached out and graciously donated a lot of it to us, a lot of this furniture. So. We are replacing a lot of old office chairs, a lot of old. You know, chairs that are in the conference rooms and old chairs from the Council on Aging with this donated equipment.
Yeah, he went and looked at those, all that furniture. It was a while ago now, Tony. We went into Boston, right? But yeah, nice furniture. So it worked out well.
Roll call vote.
Josh Andrew mine.
My call line.
Jean Canty, I.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the all-alcohol one-day liquor license to the American Legion Post Two-Fifteen. Ninety-six, the heart mode, the heart for Bob, for the Bob Fields Boston Marathon. Fundraiser for the Boston Police. Foundation on. Saturday, April first, two thousand twenty-three, from five PM to eleven PM.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Bob Fields is on the call, I see.
So I think one of the last times, one of the last times I spoke to you gentlemen in this regard, I was standing in Phoenix, Arizona, and today I am. Calling you from the airport at Charlotte, North Carolina. So I guess I do appreciate Zoom. And the ability to meet with you and, you know, I just want to say. I'm really hopeful this is the last time I need to come to you for a one-day liquor license. So, Gene, don't call me out, please. The, the, the information is with the attorney. And we're really hopeful that he's going to get it to you this week or next week. I'm going to assume next week since you probably haven't gotten it yet to get our regular. Liquor license. So. Yeah, so with that, though, I would like to say that, you know, I appreciate the town's support and your support. I, you know, before I talk about. The fundraiser, I want to give a shout out to Mike Cullinan. Who qualified to run in the Boston Marathon and is shooting for a personal best. And I don't know, I think he, I think he's trying to show up his dad at some point in time, but. He's much faster than me. I needed to get a charity bib in order to fulfill my dream to run into the Boston Marathon, which I will be doing this year. So I'm running for a great cause, the Boston Police Foundation. And we're going to be doing a Jimmy Buffett night. Cheeseburgers in Paradise fundraiser on April first. I hope the community comes down. You know, and supports the cause of cheeseburgers included. But I would certainly appreciate, you know, the opportunity to host that with with the liquor license. Happy to answer any questions.
Hey, oh, hey, Mark. Mark?
Yeah, go ahead.
How many times have you won that?
The Boston Marathon?
Yeah.
I think six.
How great is that?
Yeah. And I haven't run in thirty years because my back, my back and knees. I started swimming about thirty years ago and I haven't stopped.
Oh.
Luckily, you have your son carrying it on the tradition. So that's great.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Josh Andrew mine.
My call line.
Jean Canty, I.
Thank you, everyone. Hope to see you on the first on the lifesaving station.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, let's see. I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the event request for the YMCA Stride Along. The Tide Five-K Road Race on Saturday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Beginning at eight thirty AM at Lowlands Park.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Josh Andrew mine.
My call line.
Jean Canty, I.
I move that.
Hey, getting into ongoing business, Tony, I don't know, Dan. If you saw that the Nine Little Night Road is back on the market. It's with a. With an auctioneer, so it's for HUD, I guess.
Yeah, it's one of HUD's contractors. HUD contacted us and told us that it was put up, so it's no surprise to us. It did come a little earlier than we thought, but the good news regarding my little not road is that HUD paid off all the taxes. From FY nineteen to today. With a nice check the other day that Ed Locke helped create. So, but it's going in the right direction.
Yep, it's great.
So we're, we're settled?
We're no, we're only settled for the taxes after FY nineteen, which is to say the taxes that are not tied up in the senior tax deferral program. We're still going to negotiate a number with HUD. We're just, we're just tying up some loose ends before we do that. So we're still actively involved.
Okay, that's the word actively involved. Thank you.
Before you go. We actually don't have any changes to the town meeting warrant. We can skip that motion.
Okay.
You have some changes for the budget. If you want to move to that.
Okay, I move that the board of selectmen vote to accept. Do I have to open the warrant first?
No. No, we're not, we're not making any changes to the warrant. We're just going to make some changes to the omnibus budget.
Okay, I move that the board of selectmen vote to accept it. No, excuse me. I move that the board of selectmen. Vote to approve their FY twenty-four budget and send it to the Finance and Advisory Committee for their review.
Seconded.
Okay, I'll share my screen. And I'll pull up these budget changes.
Tony?
Yes.
Okay, I could be mistaken, but isn't? Isn't the budget part of the warrant at this point?
It is, but the article, you know, we're not making any change to the warrant. There's an article there for the omnibus budget. Actually, all we're doing is.
Do we have to open the warrant in order to consider these changes?
No, because the article doesn't, the article's not changing at all. The article itself just speaks to. You know, putting the eventual FinCom budget on the floor for approval. This is our budget that we provide to the FinCom. As long as there's a place in the warrant for the omnibus budget and we're not amending the language there, we don't really need to. Make any changes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can you see the spreadsheet that says FY twenty-four budget adjustments? And I know Allison, our town accountant and finance director is on the call as well. Allison, are you on with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. The changes to the omnibus budget that we're presenting to you, you really want to look at. Twenty twenty, this column here, twenty twenty-four. Town admin budget adjustment one. And the variance. Twenty twenty-three variance. So this.
All right, I should say, that should say twenty twenty-four variance.
That's right, yep.
It's the difference between the town admin budget approved on two fifteen and the adjustment.
Thank you. We just recently had our free cash certified by the state and we also have. New numbers from the governor's fiscal year twenty-four budget. So we've taken those changes and added them into our proposal. As you can see, our state assessments went up. Thirty-five hundred dollars charter school assessments went up sixty-one. Sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And school choice assessments decreased twelve thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. And all that's based on the governor's fiscal year twenty-four budget. Allison, do you want to explain any of those further?
Um, so the, you know, these are kind of dictated to us, these assessments by. It starts out with the governor's proposal and then it goes through the House and Senate and then Ways and Means settles on a number. So these numbers are still likely to change. But I do recommend, you know, going with these newer numbers primarily because the charter school assessment has increased a lot. That's primarily driven by enrollment. We enrollment increased from FY twenty-two to the current year FY twenty-three. By three individuals. And so that's the, the reason for the increase. It's based on enrollment. And the tuition rate has also gone up over those same years. So and then the way that we receive reimbursement, we do receive some reimbursement for charter school, but it's a percentage-based each year. And so. The percent that we're going to receive is not that great in year one. So I would recommend adopting this higher. Assessment amount for that.
Any questions on this, on the cherry she changes before I move on?
None here.
All right, so under Treasure Collector and Inspection Services. There was just a, an error in our previous calculations, so minor changes there. The, the next is sewer and sewer debt. These are some significant changes. Good news. We just, we received our estimate from Lynn Water Sewer today. And the estimated assessment was. Reduced, we reduced it. Based on that estimate from Lynn Water Sewer. So prior to today, we were. We had a four hundred thousand dollar line item in that assessment. We were able to reduce that down to three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The. What that really means for. Our ratepayers is we will be able, we will be able to. Level fund our sewer rates going into fiscal year twenty-four. There will be no increase in the rate. If this budget is approved. As presented. And we've also, Allison and I looked at our retained earnings. Now that our free cash has been certified and our retained earnings have been certified and we've added a. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment towards our sewer principal debt. With that payment, we'll be paying off some outstanding bands from. The fiscal year eighteen, Allison? Or earlier than that?
No, it's from, it's from eighteen, FY eighteen. Yep, so we still have some outstanding bans for sewer emergency work. So this will allow us to pay down that principal and then forego having to borrow long-term, thus avoiding interest costs.
Exactly, so. Good news on that, good news in that problem. Those are the, those are the only changes that we're proposing at this time. So if you have any questions.
Well, I'll just, not really a question, but it's great that you can pay down some debt and it's also. We can't take credit, I guess, but I know a couple of years ago, we thought we were looking at a pretty steep. Hike in the, in the sewer rates when with the departure of Gharalik Farms and. And some infrastructure improvements they needed to make over there. So. It's good news that, that it's not going up, so.
My only question to Allison and Tony is. That I thought I saw. That the free cash was what approximately nine hundred thousand dollars?
Yes. That's for free cash in the general fund.
Right. And how much in the enterprise funds?
It's five hundred and fifty thousand for water and sewer and thirty-five thousand for trash.
Well, that's good. On the general fund free cash, where is most of that coming from?
So free cash is generated from budget savings. So this is all based on FY twenty-two financials. So they take a look at what you didn't spend against. So they take a look at what you didn't spend against what was budgeted for FY twenty-two as well as increases, any increases in revenue over what you originally projected. Those are the primary drivers of it. Then they take into account encumbrances and things of that nature.
Generally, we're, we're pretty conservative on our estimates of revenue. And we had some new revenue over the last few years in local meals tax and, and short-term rentals that we haven't really had, especially short-term rentals. We haven't had a full year of revenue there, so we were very conservative.
We didn't budget anything for short-term rental. So to be safe, we were very conservative. We were super conservative and we ended up getting over seventy thousand, so.
So would you say that free cash was, in terms of revenue and expenditures, fifty-fifty in terms of, was it more lack of expenditures than increased revenue?
That's a good question. Let me, let me just pull up my sheet really quick.
Great question.
I think, I mean, we're usually around, I, I think like somewhere between, I would say like five hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars is really our sweet spot, I would say, for free cash amounts. So obviously we're north of that. A lot of that due to, I think it's gonna, I think you're gonna see a lot of that extra is coming from the revenues.
Revenue side.
Yep. It was about fifty-fifty revenues and savings on the, on the budget side.
We still had some, we're still using some of our ARPA funds in FY twenty-two instead of, instead of, especially in, for public health, instead of utilizing the appropriated amount with the budget.
Is it, is it normal for a town, well, the town house size to carry that large an amount of free cash in our enterprise general funds? And, and, and using Mark's comment, does that say that we're not?
Let me just say this, Gene, about a misnomer about free cash and I'm sure Tony and Allison can say it. It's not free and it's not cash. But I mean, I, I think it's a little high this year. That's why I was asking the question. I think Tony's right. I think it's important to be very conservative on your revenues and very tight on your expenditures. I mean, four to five hundred thousand dollars in free cash is what you should probably expect every year. But if you have some other revenue sources that you weren't, that you couldn't plan for that came in, then that's going to kick that up some.
And we.
It sounds like that's the case this year.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and just, you know, in the future years, we're going to see with the Coast Guard housing, that's a real tough one to predict. You know, the timing of revenues of sales, you know, our costs associated with expenses in those properties have changed based on vacancies. So it's been, that's a tough one to predict. And so we're being very cautious about that, too.
What, what are we projected to take back from that in total from that nine little and a half sale?
About twenty-four percent of the initial purchase price is probably what we're looking at, but that's just an approximation for now. That just is the number that we agreed to when the first HUD attorney was involved. She's now been promoted, so with the second one, but somewhere around there.
We had gone as high as thirty-five percent if I recall.
Yeah, I don't, it's not going that high, but possibly.
That's a good point, Gene. Those, that, you know, if the, if Nine Lomah Road sells and we get a few hundred thousand dollars from that sale to pay off the deferred taxes, that's going to be new revenue that Allison, I assume you're not accounting for in your projections for fiscal year twenty-four. So that would affect, you know, free cash in fiscal year twenty-six.
Correct. Yeah, I'm not, I've not accounted for that.
Okay, all right, great.
I just want to mention, Mr. Chairman, that free cash has to be appropriated at the town meeting. So it's not something that we can just play with. It's, it's, it's particularly in the general fund. It's in the general fund and it only can be appropriated through town meeting vote.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Tony. Thanks, Allison. Okay.
Just one more thing, just one more thing on the, just to recap on the sewer mark, it's five hundred and fifty thousand for fiscal year twenty-four and retained earnings, where our current budget plan is proposing to use a hundred and fifty thousand of that towards a new dump truck at the DPW combined with a hundred and fifty from ARPA for the other, for the second truck. Plus, using seventy thousand dollars for capital outlay in water and sewer and then an additional, I think, fifty thousand for paving, for emergency paving needs related to utility work. So if you add all that up, you know, a hundred and fifty plus fifty, two hundred, two seventy, we still had, you know, a decent amount of retained earnings that we weren't, didn't have a use for yet. And we were being, we wanted to have our pain earnings and free cash certified by the state before we've made any other decisions. So now that that's been certified, we looked at future capital needs and tried to predict, you know, if we didn't use these funds, how would it impact fiscal year twenty-six and the potential needs that we have down the road? And we felt it wasn't going to be a negative effect if we utilize the funds now instead of letting them drop for a future fiscal year. And you, and it would be a positive fact if we use the funds now to pay down those bands.
It, yeah, makes sense. Absolutely. You don't want that to go long term. Then as Allison said, pay the interest on them. Pay them off, pay them off.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Josh, enter mine.
That's all right.
Gene, can't the eye? Preserving his point. Any new news, Josh?
No, not really. We're, we're in the midst of the deposition phase and that'll go on for another, at least another few weeks. And that's really all that's happening now.
Okay. Before we get into Town Administrator's Report, I'm going to make a suggestion here. Something I'd like to see. And that is a, just before Citizens Forum, a Selectmen's Forum. Just kind of a segment where we can have a, an open agenda and, and speak about anything that might come to mind, and obviously within the right framework, but just to kind of make it a more open session. Anybody want to comment on that?
I, I wouldn't mind. Yeah, we got to be careful with that, Gene. We have the open meeting line. To make it a free vote discussion might be problematic.
I didn't think of that.
Yeah.
Dan, would it be an opportunity to bring up potential topics for a future meeting?
Abs, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So I think, Mr. Chairman, it might be valuable from that perspective. Obviously, we can't vote or maybe even opine on things, but we could bring up topics that, and get them on the agenda for the next meeting or, you know, some future date.
But, but, but with no discussion? Dan?
Whether or not they should be on the agenda, I think will be fine. But to get into the content, I mean, there are certain things that come up within the forty-eight hours that we posted. That's fine, like, like yesterday. But you were just getting to a slippery slope before you sort of opened it up to anything, anywhere. But to Josh's point, if we're looking to what could be on the next agenda, I think that's perfectly fine.
A good, a good example might be the following, and that would be that I would ask you where we can go with it. What, what's happened with our nav? I'm getting a lot of, I'm getting a lot of complaints about airplane noise.
I haven't heard anything from that committee in a while, actually, and I believe it was with the FAA for their, for their sort of public comment on their process. I think they call it a point nine zero or something. But I'll tell you what, before your next meeting, I'll have something.
Okay, but there's, there's an example of what I'm talking about. That's okay to have that kind of a discussion to bring it up and say, hey, we'll, we'll look at this the next time around.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, great. Everybody okay with that?
It, it just gets, what you don't want to do is start getting into the details of that discussion and, you know, providing opinion or deliberating on that topic until the next meeting because of what was posted. So, you know.
I was just about to ask your feelings on this, Tony.
As long as we're not breaking the open meeting law, I'm all for it.
Okay, great.
And my understanding with open meeting laws, you just can't deliberate on it unless it's properly noticed.
Exactly.
You know, bringing up topics of interest that you want to discuss at the next meeting, it actually sounds like a good idea because you're kind of giving residents a heads up. Even more than a forty-eight hour notice. So it's not a bad idea. But you just want to be careful you don't start getting into the details or start, you know, sharing opinions or deliberating that topic because, you know, the public was not noticed that that discussion was going to occur.
Okay. Hey, it's just one more thing, Dan. A, a committee has a meeting and one or two or three of us selectmen show up at that meeting. What liberties, if any, do we have?
Yeah, it gets really tricky there, Gene. You, you are citizens, of course. You are, have every right to be in a meeting, but it gets really tricky when you start to speak up at the meeting, especially when you start to offer opinions. Then it really blurs the line as to, well, there is another selectman in the audience and the AG has determined that that could in some circumstances be a violation. I think the smartest thing is to have just one selectman go, but I realize that may not be feasible. The second best thing would be just have more than one go if that's the case and just remain silent. But that being said, it gets to a very gray line because you, as a citizen, have a right to speak up, too. But those are the two best choices. But to the extent something has to be said, then we can just deal with it at that time.
So your best recommendation in that instance would be?
Just one of you go.
Okay.
Or, or if two of you go, then just don't say anything. Just listen.
Yeah.
Dan, could you, could you open your comments at, if two or more of the selectmen were there with a disclaimer that you are speaking on behalf of yourself? And not the board of.
Yeah, you, it, there is that, but the idea that, what the, what the AG rulings have come down and said is, well, if the other selectman is within earshot and they hear your opinion, that is a form of deliberation and could get into a tricky spot. You know, another great thing, if you really, if you, if you want to really be squarely within the OML, notice as a meeting. Notice as a meeting and just, you're free to participate at your leisure and open and close it like you would. That might be one easy way around it.
Okay.
Not, not around it. We just comply with it. Get around anything, but just comply with the meeting law, with the meeting law. So that would be a great fix.
Okay. And, and another good example, just to quickly get through this, is Mark, Mark is the, is, is on the HPP Committee. And I show up or Josh shows up or we both show up. He's a member of the committee, so he's going to be having full discussions.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a tricky, it's a tricky road to follow. But to the best, in, in that case, the best example is to make it a joint meeting. And even though one selectman might be in the, in the gallery or the audience, that's fine. You don't have to sit top. That would be a, a, a way to comply.
And it's a sub, it's a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen, so. The hazard production plan is.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, let's, let's take tomorrow night for an example, the, the meeting on the Northern Strand. I mean, we're probably all, all going to be on it.
Yeah. Well, the, the advice is the same. You just, if you're compelled to say something, I would recommend you don't opine to anything. I remember once, Josh, you, I think asked a question, and that's really not an opinion, right? But I, I recommend just one person go and if that, if that can't happen, it just try to keep your words as brief as possible. And to Mark's, to Mark's point, just, you can also just declare that you're talking as a citizen, not as a selectman.
That's, that's kind of hard to do. I think, I think the, the best is the recommendation to just observe.
Yeah, it, it's tough, no doubt, but that's sort of the line you have to toe in your position as a selectman.
Tony, perhaps in a situation like that, if, if, you know, the three of us are on the Zoom call, that you could say, you know, that, that the board is present, they're not, they're not permitted to discuss anything or opine on anything, so, but they're here listening. Just so that people know we're engaged.
Exactly, that's cool.
I'll do that.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Okay, Town Administrator's Report. Unless anybody has anything else to say during the Selectmen's Forum. It's a joke. Town Administrator's Report.
So I had Northern Strand, we already spoke about that, and the storm, I was going to recap that, we've already discussed it. I wanted to find out with our phone system at the town hall for anyone that's been having trouble connecting with the town hall. If you're calling and, you know, getting a voicemail, please leave a voicemail or, you know, email us directly. We've had, we've transitioned from an old system into a new system and we've had a lot of trouble with the, with that process. But we have had, we had a group meeting with Verizon and Masters Telecom and our IT department two days ago. And it's on the, I think, I think I made it clear to Verizon and Masters that it needed to be at the top of their priority list. It seems like they received that message and we're hoping that all those bugs are fixed very quickly. So I apologize for anyone that's had trouble connecting with us, you know, again, leave a voicemail or send us an email or come on in. We are, we're working on fixing that. On Friday, I applied for a community funding program through Congressman Molden's office for five hundred thousand dollars for downtown revitalization, I called it. Really what it's, what the idea of this, if we were to receive funding for this project, the concept of the project is to look at, you know, following his line, the former master plan for this area along with the hazard mitigation plan that was recently completed. The idea of this funding would be to make the area more resilient by putting above ground transmission wires from really from like seaside variety to Kennedy Court and, and making those underground transmission wires for electrical and telecommunications. By redoing that, that, that area really is susceptible to some high winds and it's a critical piece of infrastructure. So removing it underground, moving it into underground would make that more resilient and improving the light, streetlight. And improving the light, uh, street lighting in the area, sidewalks, uh, is an economic development, um, concept. So really kind of uh, revitalizing the area so we can, um, make it more attractive and, you know, help with, uh, you know, economic development in the, in the area, uh, where their, where their spaces. Their seasons are so short as, as it is, um, the idea would be to make that area more resilient, so it's, you know. We're not spending so much time in the spring, uh, cleaning up a mess from, from the, uh, winter storms. Uh, it actually dovetails with the grant application that we submitted and we're in the second round of for Short Beach Dune, which I've discussed previously in this meeting, uh, to increase the height of Short Beach Dune and the, uh, entrances. So, well, that would be like a, a coastal protection project, so to prevent some flooding. And this grant that I applied for on Friday, uh, would be, you know, kind of the back end of that of improving the area as a result of increased protection.
Could, could we, could we call that the Richard Lombard Town Center?
You're right, you're right, Gene, uh.
I know he's pushed for it a long time.
A long time.
Yeah, he's been pushing out for that.
He has.
If there's an opportunity to, um, you know, to go through those plans, uh, obviously those funds are earmarked for those, those economic development plans and these things, but if there's a chance to go through those and see sort of, uh, what is not covered in that scope, but might be desirable for Nahat. So for an example, um, the utilities are going underground from, uh, seaside Kennedy Court, um, it'd be nice to look at, um, what it would take to bring them underground all the way up to, um, Valley Road, which is, um, where they end along the hot road. Separate projects, separate funding, but maybe there's some economy scale if they could be combined at the same time, so. Uh, there might be some other similar type things. That was sort of an obvious one, but, um, maybe we can each, um, get together with you individually, Tony, and go through those. Um, see, make sure we understand what is covered and, and, um, what other tidbits we could, um, we might be able to do at the same time if we could find funding for that.
Yeah, if we get the funding, if we get the funding, then we'll define the scope. I mean, essentially, I've, I've been told by the utilities that it's about, uh, a million dollars a mile uh, to put that underground. And then plus by putting it underground, uh, you're going to need to purchase, uh, new streetlights, posts. Those could be anywhere from fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars apiece, so. Anyways, if we get the funding, um, in the application, I did, I, to make it more attractive, I said that if we got the funding, we would match it with a hundred thousand dollars from town funds, so we'd have to go to town meeting, um, a future town meeting and appropriate that. Um, so if there's additional items that go beyond that budget, we could approach it at town meeting for additional funding.
It, it certainly could use a dual.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, all of those, those streetlights from seaside variety to Little Nahat. You know, nice to replace those two, so that we do like nice decorative lighting, everything matches. Um, but again, I it's, it's just an application at this point, so.
Yeah. I know I've said this a few times too, but, um, you know, that stretch of, uh, light posts and electricity posts, from the bank at Little Lahat to Little Lahat Road is such a short stretch, but, um, it's super nice to get those underground.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Um, I, so, just to explain, you know, I felt the economic development tie-in on the application would make it more attractive, so I kind of focused on our downtown business area.
Yeah, no, I mean, great job, absolutely. Um, yeah, just.
Yeah, I agree with you. Be nice as well.
Yeah.
The DPW, uh, and through Zach and, um, the Open Space Committee's CPC application, and Josh, I know you've been involved with it too, uh, secured funding for Bailey's Hill and, um, some trail, uh, rehabilitate, rehabilitation project, vegetation, vegetation removal, and uh, that's an ongoing project, but they made a lot of headway last week, uh, with, um, Pathfinder came into town and as our contractor and removed a lot of dead, um, trees from Bailey's Hill and really cleaned up the area. It looks great so far, still more work to do, but it's really coming along nice. And it ties in with the project that we completed in the fall. We still have some planting to do on, uh, the Kelly Green's Ocean View side of Tri Mountain. Um, and if you continue walking towards Bass Point, where we have funds in our budget to rehab the town, uh, one-story garage at the bottom of Tri Mountain Road, so that work is on, is, uh, occurring now. We're repointing the brick and putting a new roof on it, cleaning up that area. And then up Tri Mountain Road, when National Grid had Aspen in town, removing, um, trees from electrical, uh, transmit wires. We had them focus heavily on that space to remove a lot of vegetation on that side of Bailey's Hill. And we have funds in our budget to replace the fencing along that, along that area too. So that entire Tri Mountain, Bailey's Hill area is really transforming, uh, thankfully to, you know, the CPC funding that we've been able to get. Um, and, you know, it's, it's really taking shape, taking form and to, yeah, um, a really enjoyable, uh, trail system through both those areas. So if you haven't checked it out, uh, it's going well.
Yeah, hey, Tony, I was up there a couple hours ago and, um, looks great. Um, I was thinking it'd be nice to get a sign made up similar to what we had made up for the Ocean View side. You know, I, I'm sure there's people that go up there and think, oh my God, they're cutting down, you know, they're cutting down trees, what's happening? So. Yeah, maybe we can talk about that tomorrow, a little, a little sign, you know? So people understand what's happening and what the, the end goal is. But yeah, it looks, I'm very pleased.
Looks great. It looks outstanding.
Um, and then I was just going to mention that the Planning Board, um, is having their public hearings on the two, uh, uh, articles related to short-term rental. One from the Short Term Rental Committee was Monday night. And the Citizens Petition article is tonight in the town hall. Uh, it's a standard process required whenever you're, uh, have an article on town meeting that's going to amend your local zoning, the planning board conducts a public hearing process. So, uh, with that, that's happening, um, night, and then the planning board will provide a recommendation to town meeting and, and the Finance Committee, uh, next.
Tony, uh, that begs the question, when are we going to not get more involved, but discuss it in some detail? I know we've, we've got the articles. I've read it through, perused through without reading in depth, and I need to do that. Um, but then I would presume that we would have a discussion on that. I don't know. I'm looking for guidance here.
Yeah, I, 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 I think that, um, there are two, there are articles, um, proposed for the town meeting. Um, I think those article, well, the short-term, uh, mental, um, committees article does, um, provide a lot of discretion, uh, recommends a lot of discretion to the Board of Selectmen in terms of setting rules and regulations uh, around this. Um, and certainly we'll, we'll need to have a discussion about that at a future date. Um, but if I'm not mistaken, Tony, I think we need to let this, uh, go through town meeting at this point. Um, see what changes are and see what the recommendations are for the, the Board of Selectmen to weigh in on.
Yeah, and, and I've, I've been asked by the Finance Committee to put together a, um, like a matrix comparing the two, uh, articles. And I, I said I would do that, so I can provide that to the selectmen as well. It would, it will be very much a neutral, um, product. You know, I want to be very careful that any, anything that, um, anything that I produce, you know, isn't pushing residents in one direction or the other. It's just providing the details and the comparison of the two um, articles and then letting residents make a decision for themselves. That being said, you know, the Board of Selectmen, I think, have, you know, have the ability to produce a recommendation if you would like, or a supporting statement if you would like. Um, and submit it to the Finance Committee. It's up to them if they want to include it in their book. Um, but I believe, I I don't see why you wouldn't be able to do that unless, Dan, do you?
No, that, that's, that's perfectly fine. I, I, I think anybody can do that, really. Um, I think there's a word limitation in, in the bylaws, but, um.
There's a date, there's a date too, but maybe with the being, coming from the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee would work with you guys on that.
Yeah.
Why don't I suggest this, then, uh, Tony, uh, for our next meeting, that you put it on the agenda and we can have a discussion about that among us? If we, if we have any recommendations, we can make it at that point.
Okay, just looking at the dates to see what responsibility there is for, on our part. On the bylaw that triggers the zoning. I don't see anything that suggests that we review and make recommendations, but I'm sure we must.
You're not, there's no requirement of you, but that doesn't mean you couldn't provide some sort of supporting statement if you wanted to, to the Finance Committee. But like I said, ultimately, it's their book and up to them if they're going to include something.
You can always get up on town meeting floor as well.
When does the zoning board get it after it's voted in?
They don't. They just, they just enforcement.
Okay.
But what, what was the question? When do they, when do they what?
When does the zoning board get this after the article is self-approved?
Nope, they don't have a, there's no requirement on them either.
Okay.
We, we did send the Chair, Jocelyn Campbell, a courtesy copy, and she, she seemed pretty satisfied with it. Um, from the, the committee that is. So she won't be surprised by what she sees at town meeting.
Uh, that's all I have.
Uh, Tony, one last thing, Mr. Jim, and, uh, could you include, uh, on our next agenda, uh, the request from, um, SWIM, um, to have a discussion about crowdfunding in town?
Yes, certainly. Tony?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Citizens Forum.
Again, if you could just state your name, address, and, uh, limit your comments to two minutes. And then just raise your hand, um, or zoom or write your name in the chat and I'll call on you. Francine?
Hi, Francine Amari Faulkner, two nine five Nahat Road. Um, as coyote pupping season is around the corner, so time is of the essence to get a proactive plan in place. Um, so that we don't have a repeat in the fall of what we had to experience this year. Um, so I have a couple questions. Are you engaging a coyote professional to guide residents, not just in hazing, but in coexistence? And who is being considered? Um, so I'll, I'll do each, answer each part and then I'll go on till I hit my time limit, okay? I think that's the easiest way to do this.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're looking into a number of different options at the moment.
Can you be more specific, Tony?
We have a proposal for the wildlife control that we're considering.
Okay, I think Rebecca, as I see on the call, so is it is it worthwhile to ask a question to her? I'm, I'm concerned because the clock is ticking and we need to get things in place.
I can appreciate your concern. We're very aware of, you know, the pressing timeframe and we're moving as fast as we can.
So do you have any idea when you expect to implement something?
Uh, we, we don't have a date by which we're going to be announcing our next steps, yeah.
Okay. Last year, you provided the community with, with, um, lots of materials and props like whistles, but a lot of people were unwilling and were unable to haze or haze effectively. So what are we going to do this year that's going to be different? Are we going to rely on the coyote professional to help with that? Because obviously, even though it's frustrating for us all, when people don't learn how to haze or refuse to and continue to, um, violate, uh, you know, feed or don't keep their dogs on a leash, um, what are we going to do this year that's going to be different?
I do think we need, need to, uh, renew the education, public education part of that and, um, and, you know, have hazing tools available. Um, as Tony said, we don't have anything scheduled right now, but, um, we do recognize that, you know, the pup season is, is upon us, and Tony and I have been talking about this for the last couple of days. But I think, you know, to my mind, um, it's really about public education, citizen education, citizen engagement in, in the process, because I think, you know, without that, um, um, you know, we could find ourselves back in the same situation again. So, um, it is something that we, we need to, um, I'll say reinvigorate after, you know, we've had a few quiet months here. We'd like to keep it quiet. So, um, it's gonna, it's gonna involve citizens of Nahat, um, being part of that process. And, and so we have to reinvigorate the education and, um, and help people with the, um, learn how to haze now.
And Josh, I don't disagree with you, but I think that we have to acknowledge that even with everything the town did do last year, it, it didn't work because people don't know how to haze or they're afraid to haze. So, and, and again, it's not just about hazing. It's going to be things like police issuing fines for people who don't have their dogs on a leash, and we can't expect average citizens to do that piece. We need to have the law enforcement involved at that level, or the bylaw, hopefully it's, you know, it'll be comprehensive enough that we can work on these violations, we can issue fines if there's food sources found. Um, so these are all just things I want to put on the table. Who's going to address the feeding issues? Um, you know, it isn't always obvious. It isn't always something, unless you're a trained professional, and I don't mean anything against Scott. But food sources aren't always that obvious. So I think it's unrealistic to expect Scott to know exactly what to look for. We need somebody who can give us a good overview, educate, educate us all, so we've all got tools and we work as a team, the whole town. We work together to have a productive outcome, but we need. Go ahead.
If I could, uh, do, do you have a plan in place to deliver?
Gene, I've, I'm familiar with Rebecca Demetrius' proposal. I've seen, you know, I've seen a good portion of that. I've seen, you know, I've seen a good portion of that. And I've, and I'm also familiar with what Project Coyote proposed, and I'm a bit familiar with what Humane Society suggested. Out of all that I have seen, I think Rebecca's is the most comprehensive and the most reliable and the most up-to-date in terms of the science. So I would hope that you would accept her proposal or come back with something to her that will work for us all. And I think, you know, I, I think she has the most to offer out of everything I've seen. So that's, that's my, that's my input.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, that's pretty much what I had to say, so thank you. I'll lower my hand.
All right, thank you. Rochelle?
Hi, it's Rochelle Capobianco, 131 Castle Road. I want to know about possible fining of people who do feed intentionally or otherwise, if that's a possibility. For people who put out green garbage bags in lieu of, they don't even recycle, in lieu of garbage or recycling bins, they stick green garbage bags outside. That's a great thing for coyotes or rats or anything. And I'm wondering if there's a possibility that fines could be issued. I also have a, you can answer that if you'd like, and then I have one more question.
We have, so there is a waste, there's a, we have a bylaw in place that deals with littering and waste, and, you know, proper ways to put your trash on the curb. So there is a fine structure associated with that. And then we have a, more specific to wildlife feeding is the bylaw is the article that's, that's part of this year's town meeting.
Okay.
So there'll be some new, there'll be some new enforcement ability if that article passes.
Okay, so somebody will be policing that.
Yeah, I mean, you got to understand that, you know, our town is limited in its enforcement ability because of the limited resources that we have. But certainly, you know, you start by, you know, creating that enforcement ability through enacting a bylaw.
Okay. Are any of you guys on the board or hunters?
No.
No.
Okay, none of, none of you, none of you have witnessed or killed a coyote or any wild animal, correct?
I have not.
No, I'm asking serious. The reason why I'm asking is if you, if you realize how many coyotes are killed by the USDA for sport, for fun, for blood every year. It's like sixty-two thousand a year.
I mean, there is a, coyote hunting is legal in Massachusetts. It's just that hunting is not legal in Nahat.
Exactly, right. And why should we allow the shop shooters? If, if shooting a coyote or hunting is not allowed, why are we allowing them to come in?
I, I think we've, we've addressed that multiple times in past meetings, but it was a public safety concern.
But I don't think we've ever really gotten a decent answer.
I thought I just answered it, "public safety concern."
The coyotes? Or the shooters? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
The shooters were brought in to address, as best we could, an existing public safety concern due to the coyote behavior.
All right, so none of you guys are hunters? And I don't know if you've ever gone on YouTube or any other websites to see what these guys do when they kill these beautiful animals.
Well, I guess we already said that we're not hunters, but I also don't think that it's really relevant to this meeting, honestly.
Oh, okay, I thought it was an open forum. Okay, I'm done then.
No, I mean, it's, it's okay to ask, and we answered, but, yeah.
And one more question. Would it be possible to get a tour of the bunkers, or is that all done? You know, the Northeast, or do I need to contact Northeastern?
Well, you definitely have to do. You would have to contact Northeastern, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you, I'm done.
Hey, thank you.
They used to give tours. They used to have an open, open house day, whatever, and they gave tours. I don't know if they're still doing that or not.
Before COVID, I think they stopped for COVID, so, all right, I'll check, thank you.
Margie?
Yeah, Margie Parisi, 15 Prospect Street. I have to be honest, I'm shocked at this point in March of 2023, you have no program ready to go for the coyotes. This has been going on for what, three, four years? And you're still looking into it? So that's one of my concerns, is why are you taking so long? And what's going on that's taking you so long? You've.
We, Margie, we, that's not a fair characterization. We, this town has done more than any other community. We've had a program in place. We've had, we've done so much for public education way beyond, and this is coming from the state. They've said that we've done more than anyone else, so we're.
But it hasn't worked.
Let me, let me respond. I, we acknowledge that there's more to do, and we're working on that. But we are far, far beyond and done more than any other community. So to say that we have, you know, it's 2023, we've done nothing is not a fair characterization.
But it hasn't worked, so we need to do something else. And sometimes going outside in the hot, first of all, the state, I have issues with the state wild, whatever that's called. I have issues with that whole department. But I just think that at this point, we should have something in place at this, at March of 2023. This has been going on. The other issue is, I still see people walking their dogs unleashed, especially on the golf course. And that's very frustrating. Because they, and, and one of the women I know, and she was quoted in the newspaper saying she was afraid of coyotes, but her dog is running all over the golf course off-leash. That's what's going on in the hunt. There are a lot of people that don't want to change, and they're rather, get rid of the coyotes. And the coyotes.
Not the approach, that's not the approach that the town is taking.
What is the approach?
We're not, we're not trying to get rid of all the coyotes.
But if people are not letting their dogs loose on the golf course, because that's where I see them most of the time, they, what, their dogs are going to take by coyotes, and then they're going to start complaining.
Well, we've, we've dealt with off-leash animals unfortunately being attacked or taken by coyotes for a couple of years now. You know, those, though unfortunately, that's a, that's the risk that that owner is taking. Now, it is against town bylaws to have your dog off-leash in those areas. So if, if you notice it and you want to call the Animal Control Officer, they can approach the resident and deal with that issue. But that type of situation, you know, has never, was not the catalyst for, you know, the issues that.
So what was, so what was catalyst?
We went over this literally the last Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yeah?
It was public safety concern.
And the other issue is, you're spending, putting $10,000 away for the USDA to come. But yet you won't spend any money on any coyote, like real science and how to deter coyotes. That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, yeah, it's, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a not-to-exceed contract, so it's not that we are spending that amount guaranteed. That's if we need it.
Right, but maybe you won't need it if you hire a professional to come to town and help residents. Then you won't need that $10,000, and maybe you could go to the school, or the library, I love the library, but could go to somewhere else in the hunt that needs it more.
Yep, as we just said, we're thinking about, in looking at various options. As Tony said, we've done more than any other town in Massachusetts. Go through the website, we've handed out whistles, we've put signs, the electronic signs that we'll put signs up around town. We've had multiple meetings with education on how to, how to haze, instructions on the website. Yes, we're gonna do more, but it, you know, I agree with Tony's assessment to say that we haven't.
And we have.
Is, is.
Yeah, we have.
People aren't listening.
I know, I know that. It's the same as people letting their dog off the leash. I mean, we can't, we can't make people listen. You know, we can offer the information, we can offer the tools, and we can, you know, hire anyone, you know, under the sun, but if people, we can't make people listen.
I, I think that.
I wish they would.
Again, I just want to, again, I, you know, I just, we, there is a response plan on our website. It talks about the types of events that occur, what the resident should do to report, who to report to, how the town will respond. We do have a response plan. It may not be at the level as, you know, Rebecca or Francine are suggesting it should be at, but it's not that we have nothing. We do have a response plan, and you're right, Margie, you know, it takes, it take, the resident has a responsibility to be involved in that solution. Now, I don't think it's, again, I also don't think it's really fair to say that nobody listens or it hasn't completely worked. You know, there are incidents that even if we get a professional in here, nobody can guarantee that those types of issues are never going to occur again. And so I just want to, you know, state, I think, I think our residents have been, you know, have been responsive to a lot of the stuff that we've done. I mean, the whistles and the air horns were, they, they were gone within like a few days. And, you know, I see a lot of people walking around town with them, with other tools that they've made on their own, with, you know, coyote vests for their dogs. So, you know, I think our town, I, I don't think that you can, you know, look at, you know, because there were aggressive events, doesn't automatically mean that what we've done so far hasn't worked. It's unfortunate, but, and we, we agree that there's more to do, so.
Hey, I, I honestly don't know the answer to this question, but it was my understanding that Swambsk had a coyote meeting a couple of weeks back, maybe a couple of months back. Have they put any kind of a plan into place?
You know, I don't know if they have a response plan on their website or not, but they've done, they have had a few public, a couple of public meetings recently.
But the issue is, has, has Swambsk had the USDA to come and shoot them? Did Swambsk, has Swambsk done that?
No, that wasn't the question.
Margie, that wasn't the question. Sorry.
Swambsk doesn't have the problem that Nahat has.
Agreed.
That's what I heard, but okay.
Well, I mean, making that decision wasn't easy for our town. It wasn't easy, and I'm sure, you know, that, I'm not going to, not going to, you know, make comments on to, on the, you know, the public safety decisions of, that another elected board or, you know, town decides to make. But it wasn't, it wasn't a simple decision. We've said that repeatedly.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Margie.
Bye.
Francine?
Um, Swambsk is working, Rebecca's on here, so she could probably tell you better than I can. I know Swambsk is working with Rebecca and possibly a couple of other towns where they're doing sort of a comprehensive plan. I'll, well, I'll pass it off to Rebecca. I didn't realize she, I thought she had dropped off the call, so I'll, I'll drop off and let her speak to that.
Rebecca, again, you know, if you could state your name, address, and keep your comments to two minutes.
Yeah, thanks. I'll be shorter than that, I think. Thanks for having me. Rebecca Demetrius, Humane Wildlife Control, 122 Strawberry Canyon Road, Royal Oaks, California 95076. Just to be clear, Swambsk actually had a worse time with coyotes in the last while. There were some fights on people. Just to be clear on that, and I just want to applaud you guys for doing, you have, the town has done so much to prepare its citizens. The one key thing that is missing is professional, whether that's Scott or you, you hire somebody else part-time, or it's a volunteer group, somebody that is trained to supplement hazing when the community isn't able to do it, whether that's their seniors, and they're, they can't. They can't walk their little dog and have a tool to haze. They are physically incapable of doing that. No fault of theirs. They need help. Other people may be resistant to it because they don't want to scare the coyotes, but scaring is caring. And three is, people are just resistant to it. So in those situations, that's what happened last year. The dog, the coyotes got complacent, they got comfortable, as Dave Waddles mentioned, when people aren't effectively hazing. That's the only tool that you guys were missing. And if you can bring that in, I don't care if it's with me or not, that's what was missing, is supplementing hazing when necessary, and that's it. Thank you.
Rebecca, hold on, hold on, Tony. Is there any other community in the Commonwealth that you know of, including Swambsk, that has engaged others to, under contract to do this?
Not in Massachusetts that I'm aware of. In Canada, the reason why I've worked so closely with Coyote Watch Canada. In fact, I was, I'm part of their advisory board now, as of a couple of days ago. They're the leaders in North America. They actually have these relationships, these programs working in towns quite successfully, yes.
But to your knowledge, no community in, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has engaged in outside contracts with other wildlife professionals to assist their town.
Not with boots on the ground, just because it's kind of a fairly new thing.
Okay, thank you.
It's definitely new in the United States.
Rebecca, I just had a quick question, and I understand, you know, having a, having either professionals, other than employed by the town, or having like a group of volunteers, you know, people who are dedicated to, and are trained properly, you know, that could be called. But I wanted to just ask, you know, is the technique, the hazing techniques that the town has presented to our residents, either through Mass Wildlife Project, or when Project Coyote was here, or even, you know, I know of some of our residents have watched the presentation that you've provided. You know, those, the hazing techniques, you know, they don't, they don't vary much when we're watching these things. They all, those techniques are all very similar. When you talk about a professional, are you, are you describing somebody that has like other types of techniques? Or are you saying, you know, having somebody that's dedicated to do that work when it's necessary? Or is there, is there like a technique that's not being shared with regular residents?
Sure, thanks for that. It would be, the techniques would be similar. There, there's some things that are new. It's more their experience of reading the situation, using that data and analyzing that data with their knowledge of coyotes, what's going to be appropriate, putting it through the filter of what, what season are we in? Are there pups right there? How hard can I haze? How far can I haze, or should I haze? So it's, it's more, and, and, and my point was coming in to, to bring you that knowledge and wisdom and train your first responders, so you don't need people like me, ever. That's what I want to bring you. When there's a situation, like I could have turned the behavior around last year, when, if that ever come, if that ever comes to that point, I think you need a professional to come. It could be Leslie Sampson from Coyote Watch Canada, or one of, one of her other representatives, or myself. Somebody that knows it. It's, it's new, and that's why you're not seeing it all over the US. But it's the right way to go. It works.
Okay, I think that. Thanks, Rebecca. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Margie?
Hi. I just felt, this is the second time that Gene has tried to shut me down, and I just want that pointed out, that the way it was done was kind of rude, and I was just.
Margie, I wasn't trying to shut you down, I was trying. Margie, I wasn't trying to shut you down and I was trying to get Francine's attention. Sorry if you took it that way.
All right. That was how I felt, but okay, thank you. Bye.
Okay. Anybody else out there, Tony?
No.
Okay. Mark, you want to make that motion to adjourn? You want me to do it?
Yeah, so, um, I moved at the board of selectmen.
We, we have one more topic. We have one more topic. We have an executive session.
Yeah.
Unless you guys want to skip it, which I.
No, we better do it.
Yeah.
Well, I was just going to make that motion.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Go ahead.
I moved at the board of selectmen adjourned to executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A 3 to discuss pending litigation strategy regarding Town and the Hunt versus Four Coast Guard housing tenants. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
Second.
Do you, do you declare, Mr. Chair?
Yes. I do declare.
And we will not be re-entering open session.
Yes. Will CoVoo?
Josh, you're for mine.
Mark, all night.
Jean, at the eye. All right, just give me a minute here to set us up. Thank you, everyone in attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you.